Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Apologize for the delay in getting started on this budget work session. But we're here. And attached in your memo was a review, budget review scheduled that the finance director put out. So I'm gonna turn it over to her and we'll start with these items unless we want to start with council members' feedback. I know council member Alshar has been working with finance director on some issues. We could start off with the free-for-all and then hit the specific items?
If I could. What would really help staff? And we've tried to provide the overview of the general fund in the prior work sessions. If you're at a point where you wish to start making amendments to the budget, offering proposals for each other to consider so that we have time to analyze those adjustments, come back to you if we need to do any kind of analysis, and get the budget adopted by May 27th. It would be very helpful, given the nature of this proposed budget, if we could start that process this afternoon. And then, once we get a handle on the general fund, then we can turn our attention to the enterprise funds and the other funds in the budget, which are much less challenging and have much less of an impact in terms of the potential operational impacts from budget balancing that the general fund holds for us. So I think we completed last week, Michelle, or the prior work session, the overview of the general fund. We've covered the major highlights there. And we would welcome your proposals, discussion of any adjustments you'd like to make to the general fund so that, Michelle, staff can start working on any kind of follow-up analysis you might need.
Is there anyone that would like to start? General fund. Nobody has any suggestions? Everybody likes the city administrator's budget, right? You're gonna pass it later tonight?
Yeah.
Since nobody else is going to, I'm not gonna sit here and stare at each other for an hour and a half, I'm assuming. Couple of things. I did meet with the finance director earlier today. I've read eight out of 10 of the sections of the budget. The two that I have not had the opportunity to go through yet with her are section, what is it? Section three, general fund, or section nine, CIP. And I certainly don't want to be sitting here for an hour and a half talking about, you know, each of those singular items that we went through. But I broke the budget into two sort of outlooks. And one is, what are we gonna do this year with the proposed budget that we have? And how are we going to address the out-years that are more, I guess for lack of a better term, a structural issue within the budget? Clearly, as I said at our last meeting, I'm not certain that, you know, a double-digit tax increase is an appropriate solution long-term. And I think that's what we are looking at in the long-term projections for at least the next two years. And so, the couple of things we identified, or at least that I was able to pick out for that long-term issue are the impact of cost of future benefits. And if you look at the increase, you see the 1.5 million. I believe that only applies to the general fund portion. But I think it's important for citizens and employees and everyone to understand that if you take that base figure, it's basically for every dollar in increase in wages, it's $2 additional increase in benefits. And so, you know, that is clearly having a significant impact. And the benefit side of the budget is having a greater impact in that long-term than the actual wage discussions that we seem to spend so much more time talking about. And there was also a note back in 1011 where you looked at the voluntary retirement program, the sense that we'll continue to absorb those stormwater management-related costs, new mandates from the state. I just used that one as sort of the most expensive one I could identify. But clearly, we're not gonna just, we're not gonna keep getting that type of grant money that we saw this year from the state. And so, that's gonna have to be addressed. And then, the other one was this broader discussion, and I gave each of you a copy of it from Frederick County last year, which was that synergies approach where their governmental entities sat down between the county, the city, the educational system, and the college educational system, and looked at, you know, how each were doing the different things that they do, and if they could do them more effectively. And one item that came to mind in this budget is clearly that $400,000 proposed increase that we're gonna see with I-WEF, or workers' compensation. And the difficulty there is, you know, you expect when you enter that sort of larger pool like I-WEF, that that's, you know, the opportunity to contain that cost, and it may not be leading in that direction, which I think adds to that synergies discussion that I think is appropriate to have. Another item is, you know, the strategic plan, which is an important component of the budget, is fairly stale in this budget, and more reflective of the last administration's sort of strategic set of priorities rather than this, because a lot of them are sort of, you know, already completed or being completed. And then, the other item that I noted for the long-term, the last item, is if you look in section four of the enterprise funds, on every graph you can possibly put us on, our utilities are so drastically less expensive than every other jurisdiction around us, but we continue to lose the market share, if you will, of our bigger customers and consumers of those very utilities. And so, I think some type of marketing approach to these, you know, we talk about our cooperation with EDC, you know, and coordinated efforts there. And, you know, while we talk about, you know, projects and places ready for building, I think it speaks to Marty's issue of that Class A office space and things like that. You know, there is no cheaper utility around in any one of those utility facets than the city of Hagerstown. And I think that that is part of that long-term strategy. On the immediate things for this budget, and again, I'm definitely not gonna go back through the eight sections that I sat with staff on already, but there are two realities within that budget, at least for me, after reading it. And the one is, we have a public hearing coming up, and I feel fairly confident in the level of commitment that I've given to this budget. And there's not 11 cents to be found. I mean, it just doesn't exist. The reality, however, is if you went through it with a greater degree of, you know, line-by-line approach, you might find two to three cents. The difficulty is that doesn't address, or doesn't set you up well for the 11 cents that you're facing next year. And so, you know, I think, Don, I said at our EDC meeting, you know, it may not be an 11-cent increase. You may be looking at an 8-cent increase, and you could probably find that 3 cents within the budget, but I'm not sure that that sets you up appropriately for the 11 cents plus that you face next year. Which I think for me is why I sort of started to look at these long-term effects more so than the immediate one. You know, and there's examples in sort of each of the sections, from, you know, the policies of how you apply the benefit charge to the reimbursement of the federal, the RF fund reimbursement. And I think that's like $97,000 out of the general fund. You know, that hasn't happened. It's happening in pieces or increments. You know, you might be able to cut that.
I'm sorry, which reimbursement? I didn't quite catch that.
Yeah, sure.
Build America.
Right.
Oh, okay, Build America.
Yeah, right now, what we do is we're taking out the full amount, $210,000. About $97,000 of that is in the general fund side. Now, the feds have not cut that. I think they cut it, what? Would you say 7% and 6% over the last two years? So you're still getting about 90% of that money, you know, covered. But they could cut it at any time, and so we went ahead and cut it out. And again, that's about $97,000 on the general fund side. And you could also look at the benefit funds, like the workers' comp fund. You were basically, as workers' comp was increasing, you were taking 250 out of that fund, or the balance within that fund, and putting it toward coverage of those increase in costs. You could probably do that for any number of those benefit funds, recognizing that, you know, that reserve is going to fluctuate up and down. And that one's actually been fluctuating so far down because of its increase that you're gonna eat into all of that, you know, by the end of this year. So those are places I think you could find opportunity for some additional decrease. But it doesn't set you up well next year, you know, should that $400,000 be $500,000. So about the structural issue. Yeah. And like I said, that's why I think the issue is certainly more so in the structural side of things. The other thing that I didn't, and that you won't see clearly in here, is, you know, a lot of folks gravitate, you know, toward this $8 million that we have sort of in our reserve. And while you won't see it in this budget, that number isn't exactly that much. It's both more than that, and it includes assets in certain cases as well. And I think that that number, if you include all of your accounts, is well above that. And that's why I said, I think, you know, in those other funds, you might be able to find some small part of that. And another area that we discussed was our capital projects. By example, if you look at the different budget years, in the last several years, you'll see that your cost for your parking deck changes. And I think that that changes to some degree because folks have a different idea of what size it's going to be, you know, what it's gonna cost to place it there. And I think, at least for me, I look at that parking deck and say, okay, you know, regardless of where it's going to be, and regardless of what others feel we should build it at, whether it's this parking deck, or a park, or what have you, if other parties aren't participating in that effort, you build what you can afford. In other words, folks in this cooperative approach may want you to, you know, to build the next deck at 600 spaces. But our budget may only allow for that to be a 400-space deck. And unless those parties aren't, you know, coming to the table with shorties that you can cover the cost of those additional 200 spaces in some part, that number can't keep changing in every budget year, because all it does is continue to increase that out-year bottom line. So I think there's a number of capital projects where we could look at it in that manner. So that, without being able to sit down with staff on sections three and nine, I guess I did wanna cover eight a little bit, because we did talk about section eight. And those were the fees. You know, and again, and I think, Marty, you said to me last week, you know, I'll look at the macro, you look at the micro. And I think that that's sort of I sat down, because, you know, one example is we hear complaints all the time about folks cutting into our streets, and utilities, you know, cutting into the streets, and how they, you know, the condition that they're returned to or left in. And I was surprised, you know, we charge a pretty nominal fee for cutting into our street infrastructure, but that fee generates a significant amount of revenue for the service. And so, you know, you look at that and say, okay, at 25 to 100 bucks a pop, you know, I can't imagine the amount of time, if you're generating $70,000, the number of street cuts that you're looking at has gotta be pretty significant, because, you know, the assumption is you're inspecting those, and so...
Is there a page number you're looking at there?
Yeah.
On that one?
Section eight, page four.
Page four.
Under engineering.
Yeah, if you go all the way to the bottom. Oh, okay. The general street construction permit fee? Oh, street cutting permits? Yeah.
And that is actually the minimum fees, which are rarely paid. Most of the fees are like $300, $400, $500 per cut. That's why it generates so much revenue.
All right.
I can provide that schedule to you if you're interested.
Okay. And then you had the stormwater management permit, where you had no revenue shown. And I know we've had discussion about stormwater management fees. And so, you know, there's one where there's no revenue shown, but it's been in existence since '95. And so, I had asked, again, finance staff today why the discrepancy?
Okay. That fee is a charge to a developer that's building a development, that say they built a stormwater management pond. There's a fee charged for the permit to construct that pond, and it's to cover our inspection services and, yeah, just to make sure that the work is done properly. And there wasn't any built last year in all the, in the whole city. And years past, that number was significant. It was, you know, at least five figures. Sometimes it was over $50,000, but not last year.
All right. On the, again, if it's just an open discussion, on the enterprise side, and I think this is a question for Mike, we have listed like four projects. I don't know if I can find the pages. Boys and Girls Club, Bester Elementary, and Hamilton Hotel, for a total of about $92,000 of electric utility upgrades to serve those projects. But I couldn't find elsewhere within the budget where it specifies that those are developer-oriented reimbursements?
We handle those through an electric service agreement, which is separate, that it's not listed. They are required to use X amount of electricity in X amount of time, and then we recoup that through actual rates.
Based on that cost.
Right. If they do not make that, then ESA kicks in, and they're responsible for payment of the infrastructure upfront.
Okay. All right. So that explains why we didn't see the reimbursement.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have another question for you. One is a notation, the second is a question. I think I asked the same question last year. I'm not certain that I liked the answer then, so...
I hope I don't give you the same answer again.
Well, we were reduced, again, by, what is it, 800 customers on the water side. I'm just curious how we lose 800 customers?
Those are through bankruptcies and foreclosures.
And I'm trying to figure out, when you say we lose a customer, does that mean that that customer loses their TAP, or they just don't pay a base rate anymore?
When they're taken out of the system, they're made inactive. So when they're inactive, we don't read the meter, so we don't get the fixed fee charge off of them.
You read the meter to be creating your cash.
Yeah. So they can't steal water from us.
So do they have to buy a TAP?
Not back, no, sir.
Back to reconnect to the system?
No, sir. They do not. Because the property has paid for that. What we call the TAP would be the physical TAP, which each unit would pay for. And then, the actual services for the meter, the removal of the meter, the installation of the meter, the meter reading, is all wrapped up into our fixed fees, which are quarterly charged to each account. And when the meter's gone, then, we remove the fixed fees. They're not in our billing system, so they don't get a monthly bill stating zero.
Okay. All right. And so I guess that's the same for electric and wastewater as well?
Wastewater would follow with water.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a different number for each of the three.
Right.
And I wanted to note that the change in our process, and I hate to use the word "generated," but accounted for, about $300,000, $50,000 to electric, $150 to water, and what, $100 to sewer, and late fees.
And late fee charges.
This year, which is some recoup on the amount that you're carrying, you know, that debt that you're carrying.
Absolutely. Or the investment that we have in the assets out there. Absolutely.
So I just wanted to note that. That's all I had in that section.
Thank you.
The parking fund, I think it...
Are we on fees, or are we back in?
Yeah, the enterprise, the enterprise fund.
Yep, okay.
Section four.
Yeah.
Oh, we're back in section four now.
And I wanted to bring this up since we talked, you know, we've talked about a deck a little bit.
What page are you on?
A couple of the questions that I raised, and again, I think this speaks to our long-term sort of structural stability within our budget, is we have 11 lots, and those 11 lots, I think, are like 700 or 750 spaces. And of those, about 400 of them are permitted out, which means you really only have about 300 spaces left, if you will, within the lots to permit out or for other people to And in the decks, the two decks that we have, we have 625 spaces, but we have permitted out 525 of those, which means there's only 100 permits left within those two decks. And my curiosity was, number one, do we, once those 625 permits are sold, do we stop selling permits to park in our parking decks?
Currently, there's about 211 permits sold for the A&E deck, which has 185 spaces. So right now, that deck is currently oversold. And the reason it is, is because we know the use of that deck. A chunk of those permits, a vast majority of them, are Ward Beauty School. And because they don't have class every day in a full class, and they use it during the day and night and weekends, we can oversell that deck, knowing that. The University District deck is used a little differently. It's used for more long-term parking during the day, for a lot of government offices, city hall employees, and so on and so forth. Right now, we have about 400 spaces sold out of 440. So that one, we have to be a little more careful of, because the use of that deck is a little different.
And I guess that was my curiosity with the two decks, was, you know, what's sort of that tipping point?
That's a good question.
Because we're clearly, as uses have expanded in the last couple of years, and we continue to get requests for additional opportunity, and we look at projects for that additional opportunity, you know, I think that begins to beg that question. And on the flip side of that, out of those 11 lots, you know, I looked at the 11 lots, and you look at the revenue they generate, and again, I just, you know, I sort of think of downtown, and Marty, I think, has brought this up before, the sort of, you know, teeth and the, you know, the missing teeth in the block issue. Are all of these 11 lots worth the, worth the retaining? In other words, you know, you got revenue for one lot at, you know, $350, another one at $3,000, another one at $250, two areas that we sort of take a deficit on. And so, in concert with, you know, sort of the revitalization effort, in concert with the ability to max out our deck area and, you know, keep as much property in private, you know, enterprise as possible, I just look at some of these spaces, or some of these lots, and have that curiosity of if they're better served as a city parking lot or, you know, under private development, and have those uses, or have those users of those lots, you know, be transitioned toward the opportunity for additional deck style space.
Yeah, each lot is used differently. And some of those lots are neighborhood lots. That's why you probably see zero revenue. One of them is six spaces down on the Bryan Center lot, which is right across from the post office. And my understanding is that the city purchased and created that lot to create additional public parking on that street many years ago. We pay about $1,600 a year to rent that property. We don't own it. We collect about $600 a year on it.
So we take a loss?
We take a loss on that lot. And I don't know how to increase that, because there's other public parking on there.
And that was my question, is should we be looking at increasing it, or should we be looking at returning that to private enterprise?
That's a possibility.
And transitioning those folks to those other spaces, and that...
For one who parks there, I mean, yeah, nobody parks there.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
There's other parking opportunities within the same area, sure.
Right. That's a very small lot. Bryan Center has a large lot there, and apparently that's who you lease from, I assume.
Yes.
And then, yeah, there's six spaces. I park in the Bryan lot daily. I can't tell you, I'll bet you in the last six months, I may have seen a car parked in that lot.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to take parking.
And out of the six spaces, one, I think one of them for sure, maybe two, are handicap. So you're not gonna increase revenue off that space, because it's free. The Market House lot is used, we generate revenue from that one, mostly from the postal service. They have agreements with us, and they pay for X amount of parking in there. And so does the Department of Social Services, the entity that owns their building.
Right. I feel like there's so many different users of that lot, that it's hard to, it's hard for an average patron to sort of go down on any given day of the week and pull into that lot with any confidence of the ability of, you know, where...
Well, I think on the Market Lot, I don't think that's an issue, Monday through Friday. The day it gets used the heaviest is Saturday for the Market, when parking is free. So you're not gonna generate revenue at free. The church street lighter across from it is mostly permitted out to, again, social services. The state requires that building and that property for social services on North Potomac to have X amount of spaces. I think it's 150 or something like that. And the city provides probably 2/3 of that parking for them. The Rochester Lot, set empty for many years, used mostly by the Women's Club. But the Wanted Street Clinic used to park at another private space. In the last couple of years, they now rent from us, as does an investment firm called Tiger's Eye and a few others. There's also about 45 spaces in that lot that we generate zero revenue. That was an agreement with the county at least 10 years ago, where they get parking for free through 2018.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, because you look at the Rochester Lot, and I was like, that can't be the one I'm thinking of, but it's a fairly large lot...
It's about 120 spaces, if I remember right.
That's generating the least revenue of all of the 11 lots we have.
Yeah, but just about every space is counted for. Like I said, there's at least 45 spaces in there that we cannot generate revenue, that because it's an agreement with the county. We traded property for parking. I think they have 40 or 45 in that lot, and another 15 over in the Market Lot, that we have to be permitted for them and them alone. And that's through 2018.
Like I said, I don't know how many of these issues you want me to bring up that I just sat with staff for two hours and...
You know, I think, and I haven't heard from Martin, but I take over for a minute just to say this. I have a great deal of respect for both Kristen and Martin, and I've... I've served with both of them. And they have historically been the people you sort of look to, maybe drive staff crazy, spending hours, going over every page of the document. And those who know me know I'm much better with a broad paintbrush than a small one, and have relied a lot on their expertise over the years. This is a budget, and Kristen brought it up a week or two ago, that the only way, in my opinion, that there are going to be substantial changes, and I use the word substantial changes, to the administrator's recommendation, is for us as a council to decide we're going to take an entirely different approach to city government, period, about what we do as a government. I commend staff who want to give each other credit for the advertisement in the paper, which said that there is a proposal to raise taxes in the city of Hagerstown by 11 cents. It also said, that's almost as much as this body lowered it in 2011. So when we talk about this 11-cent tax increase, first of all, I would note that as it relates to generation of revenue and talking about our homeowners, that eight cents is doing nothing but basically equaling out what it was before the tax assessments. So that's pretty level, and the three additional cents essentially gets us back to where we were 10 years ago. Most people who are fiscal conservatives want to go backwards, not forward, so I'm saying we're going back 10 years to where it used to be. I... We've had a number of people appear before us in the past discussing the fact that it's high time we pay our public service employees fair wages vis-à-vis our public safety people, police and fire. Well, I got to tell you, when you cut positions, when you lay people off, when you do furloughs, and when you freeze wages, you have two choices. And one is to continue that government, and the other is to provide services to our community. We have seen with our own eyes what has happened with the loss of our police force. It's evident and it's obvious, and we're getting that back. We're dealing with our employee groups in a very fair manner. I can find a cent or two to get rid of in this budget if we wanted to, but that's what it is. It gets rid of some public service, you know, we're donating a lot of money to people, but it doesn't change the budget. It doesn't change the inevitable understanding that nothing comes for free. And you can't have the staffing levels and supply what this city needs and not pay for it. We're not raising revenues. We're basically staying even and then getting some additional money to get five years of wage freezes and furloughs to some semblance of reasonableness and fairness. So I tend to believe that nobody is going to be able to find a way to suddenly come up and say, yeah, we can get our city services right where everybody wants them, and we can continue raising less money and spending less. It doesn't happen. And I will tell you, I would commend Michelle and Bruce and every department head and everybody responsible for this budget. This is not an easy budget. It's not an easy job. And I know how much time Kristen Alshier spends on this thing. It's almost embarrassing to think about the amount of time he spends on this. And for him to have gone through this and found, I think this is, and I haven't heard from Martin yet, but I tend to believe that what I'm going to hear is probably less potential adjustments in this particular budget than I've heard in years. And the reason is, is because it's, again, it's bare bones. You know, like I say, you can talk about 11-cent tax increase, you can also talk about raising taxes almost as much as we cut them two years ago. And so nobody's talking about some major increases here. We are barely holding it together. The county, God bless them, have found a way not to increase taxes this year. And I say that because our citizens in Hagerstown rightfully, for a long time, have complained about double taxation. For good or for bad, when the county went from, to the tax rebate, I guess what we call it, I guess I get mixed up with the names of it anymore, to the tax rebate program, it became much more apparent of this dual taxation. And the fact that the county has not raised taxes while we have had a significant 8% to 10% to 20% decrease in assessments is also a statement that there are people that are going to get tax bills this year, that the money coming out of their accounts may be less. Between their valuations going down, us essentially only raising taxes to a degree to keep up with it, and the county not, that joint tax return is not going to have the effect that is so scary when you hear 11 cents. I would love to hear if there's any recommendations on how to get somewhere else on this thing, but I don't see it. You know, again, we haven't gotten to what we spend so much time on, and that's talking about these 10, 20, 30, $50,000 contributions to public services, which generally takes more time than the entire budget does. But that's, those are tiny items compared to what this budget is. So that's my comment. I'm really looking forward to hearing from Councilmember Brubaker.
Councilmember Brubaker?
I'm going to frame this, not in terms of a recommendation, but in light of the challenge to think out of the box, to think of possible other techniques, possible other approaches to this situation. So in that spirit, I'm putting this out. These are not, at this point, recommendations. They are ideas.
So we're brainstorming?
Concepts. No, I'm putting forth a series of concepts. I'm not asking you all to pitch in and brainstorm. I'm putting some ideas out there, okay? Some ideas which maybe all develop farther. So instead of holding it back and doing it later, we're going to put them out now per the challenge.
I'm waiting with bated breath.
Well, okay. Just wanted to make it clear that I'm not saying that this is a recommendation, or that I have something that works out to the exact bottom line. And I think that we have to begin, I agree with Kristen, but I think I like to focus it a little bit more about looking at the long-term. Solving this year doesn't help. It's a sustainability crisis. It's a long-term issue. And that's caused fundamentally by the property tax assessable decrease. The next three years, we'll be facing that. So I think we have to look at just about everything in a three-year perspective. And I think that we need to concede at least... Here's where staff's alarm bells will start going off. I need to concede at least seven cents of the 11 cents, because that is, that will hold most property owners paying no more than what they paid last year. Some will pay a little more, some a little less, but on the average, seven cents is about the number. And let me start out, I don't disagree with anything that Councilman Metzner said. I think they're all valuable goals. But I don't know how far Hagerstown can go down the road of raising taxes when we have to compete not just, in fact, not so much with other municipalities, as with the surrounding county. When people have the choice of going to, when the tax discrepancy between us and the surrounding county gets greater and greater, it's more and more difficult for us to attract people, whether it's on the fringe or whether it's downtown. So I think we have to think carefully about, no matter how we justify things are, just how far can we go? And how far can we go, it's not just this year. It's not the 11 cents. It's 11 cents plus another 10 cents, or 11 cents, or 12 cents, that the staff has outlined here. So I think we have to think of a way to get through. In my mind, the base ought to be that seven cents, but, period. But that's extremely difficult, I realize. So second alarm bell, thinking outside the box here. And again, as somebody who has been urged us to maintain, and I don't think I'm exactly departing from this, being a fiscal conservative, you know, keep fund balances strong, keep everything, keep our reserves for the various funds strong. And I am not, at this point, saying don't pay or lessen what we're putting into the insurance funds and the retirement funds. Oh, that would be a way to hide some of this. I'm not saying that. I'm saying be a little bit more open about it. I'm thinking about it. I'm not making this recommendation. I'm just saying, we maintain a fund balance that's considerably over what our standards are. There's a lot of reasons for that. Number one is because we have faced financial problems for quite a while. And these funds are often called, to the extent that they're over mandated limits, they're called rainy day funds in some areas, and today's an appropriate day to talk about rainy day funds. We're already taking 800,000 in fund balance, but we're managing to maintain a stable fund balance even doing that this year. I say we face the kind of fiscal situation, let's call it, that justifies using fund balance if we work with the rating agencies and work with others. And again, I say this might work. I'm willing to hear the other arguments, but I'm willing to put this out there. And again, as someone coming from the other, that usually comes from the other side. But we've got to get through this, and I don't see any way to do it without making taxes way too high or dropping a major apartment. I just don't see how to do that. So I'm trying to think of another way to do this. I think we have sufficient fund balance that we could augment our, that seven cent base I'm talking about. That's our first level of augmentation. I'm not making a specific amount right now, but using it, because it's a rainy day fund. And believe me, it's raining. It's raining. So use the rainy day fund. Otherwise, they just sit there and we never use them. We deliberately didn't use them to fund salaries and benefits. People say, why didn't we use it for that? Because those go on forever, and because we can't do it for three-year periods. I would say, let's plan a three-year period, and let's plan a recovery period, so we can tell the rating agencies, here's our plan to get around this, you know? We're going to do this, and we're going to get our base back up, and we're going to restore it in increments, but things like that. So I'm going to throw out using the rainy day fund. I'm going to call it the amount that we have over our mandated set-asides, a rainy day fund, and I'm going to say, let's use some. I'm not quite sure how much right now. But I'm going to throw that out as a possibility. Then I think we're going to have to look, I know we went through several million dollars worth of current revenue PGO in the CIP, and I know that we're running on fumes and all that, that we just can't. We just simply can't. I mean, if the employees want their jobs and want, and not have major hatchet jobs done, we just have to work through this, and we've got to keep our city competitive. So I, we just can't do current revenue, and I'll go through and move stuff out, but we can't do that. We can't spend it all next year. We can, need to stage that still over the next four or five years, because we're facing that fiscal crisis. And right there was a two and a half million, if I remember correctly, item next year that we're facing. And there's probably some this year. There usually is. So that's the second thing, PGO. Then I think we're going to have to do some other things that are tough, and to an extent, we've already done this, but I think we have to, and again, it's tough on staff, but there's alternatives. I mean, we're trying to fully fund salaries and benefits, so we're going to have to do some tough things. I think that we're going to have to set what, you know, back in my day, we called laps. That is position, the estimated amount that you gain by having vacant positions. And that's one way, each year, we've been able to actually gain some reverse expenditure. So I think we're going to need to set a lapse target that's maybe higher, and then we may have to, we either have to charge the city manager or the next city manager with ways to implement that, or even get it to the point where council has to approve positions. I know none of us wants that, but we're going to have to have hard administrative measures, which I know we've had, but we're going to have to continue it. I don't see, again, we've got to keep the city competitive. And so I think we're going to have to do, you know, a number of items like that, and I have some more that I'll throw out. I also think that you're going to hear, what will this new city manager want to come in here? Well, I'm not sure whether, you know, it's going to be tough. I mean, we're going to have to think about our strategy there, because, you know, we're going to have to take a lot of tough issues, I think. Deal with a lot of tough stuff. Then Lou mentioned double tax. I've been working hard on that issue, and I can't guarantee any success, but I think we're the poster child for double tax. And I've tried to get all the jurisdictions together. Even if I can't, I can try to sell down there, but I think that's another vehicle that over, we have a three-year period, we really need to focus on, because I think, you know, that's money that ought to be going to our services. And so I think we have a much stronger case, and to some extent, we may have to go alone or with some other jurisdictions that are more of a similar boat than some others. So I'm working on that. It's not going to help this year, but I'm talking three years here. Then another item that I've worked on, and I've mentioned indeed to officials at the state, but have not made, put it together as a particular thing, because I've tried to sound it out, and I'm not getting traction without putting some impetus behind it, but Rodney knows I've been working on this off and on, even driving around the city myself with my odometer and measuring the state highways that, where the maintenance ends at the city line, this is another form of triple taxation. We're paying for county roads, state roads, and our own roads. And yet that maintenance and construction ends at the city line. I think I calculated about 20 miles of state highways that are not maintained by the state, or what ought to be state highways, roads that come through the city, but the maintenance stops. Yeah, they're not numbered any, some of them are numbered, some not. US 40 is about the only one, Franklin and Washington, that's maintained. We even have a US highway route that basically we maintain. And I think that that's, could be worth several hundred thousand dollars a year, too. So there's a combination of things that maybe we can get through this somehow without making our taxes just, we can't discourage investment. That's my trouble. And there are huge macro solutions above this, people have to understand. There are more drastic than this. And finally, I want to refer to fringe benefits, which Kristen touched on, and to a large extent, those are incorporated in the union contracts. And I just had, I had a discussion with somebody that insisted that fringe benefits aren't like what the city says they're going up, and, you know, I'm looking at our budget, four cents of the increase this year is fringe benefits, four cents on the texture. Next year, it's three more cents. So people say, oh, that's just, they're just, that's a lot. So, you know, but that's something we're going to have to approach in the next round, because it's, I don't think we can do much, and we certainly can't take it out on the non-organized employees. So that's the kind of thing I'm working on. I'm not saying in the end I can find the solution, or whether that's what I'll come back to, but I thought I'd be honest and throw that out. Oh, another final thing I want to say is, and this is maybe not quite final, but almost there, I think our major source of where we can spend and where we can invest in the city... I think our major source of where we can spend and where we can invest in the city is bond-funded projects, unfortunately. I think we have some room to do that, and the spending impact doesn't hit. It hits over a period of 15 to 30 years, depending on how we, we do the financing. And to do hard things where there's going to be payoff over many years for future generations, that's where we may have some latitude to invest. And I recommend that as much of that as we can, we focus on getting downtown on its feet. And so, I think we do have some, somewhere where we won't be spending our seed corn, where we can, we do have some latitude for investment. But it's not in terms of general fund PGO and current revenue. It's in terms of what can be, what can we bond finance. That's where we have a little bit of latitude. So, with that, you know, those are just some things I'm throwing out to discourage the staff and to...
And you've communicated, will you be communicating with staff?
Yeah, I'll communicate with them, yeah. But, you know, I know, I know about things well enough to know what I'm throwing out, but, you know, but whether I can make it work or not, I...
Anyone else? Mr. Munson, is it not I?
Well, it's not very easy being faced with the impossible, as I think Councilman Metzner sort of pointed out a few minutes ago. We've got so much time to adopt a budget, about 30 days, I guess, and it's going to have to be done by then. And Marty, you're right, we've got to, we've got to compete. There's no question about that. But in order to compete, in some sense, we've got to provide services that people have come to expect. I mean, I think we're at the point when someone could say, and I'm not, I'm really just saying this, but I would like not to be able to say this, that, you know, do we make a choice between whether we want police, or firefighting, or roads in Hagerstown? It's almost where we are. These are incredibly difficult issues, and I, you know, I, I don't envy this council at all for having to make these decisions now. We are going to have to make them. We're going to have to deal with them. Sure, I think we can probably, I've read this thing over, just, I think we can probably cut a couple of cents maybe, or, but that's not going to, it's not going to solve our problems.
I have a question. When has been the last time the taxes were actually raised? Because I, I can't remember. I mean, I know that when we sat in council, when I sat in council, as well as Lou, I don't remember going back how far, because I know Lou would say, you need to do it now. But how far was it back, Bruce, that we actually did have to raise taxes?
Wasn't it '05?
Yeah, last time was fiscal year '04, '05.
And how much was that at that time?
It went up a penny and a half.
Right.
It'd gone up...
Section 3, page 6.
Right, yeah, if you want to see that whole history, but...
No, that's okay.
One and a half cents in FY '05.
You know, I mean, I think that the people that are listening really needs to hear this, because...
It was a decade ago.
What we are faced with is the assessable base that we just don't have. And again, it's providing the services that we desperately do need, because the past council did go in, did do a lot of cutting of positions, and it really has made an impact on the city. And I just don't see where, you know, trying not to go forward with this, but I'm glad that, Marty, that you did say about the rainy day fund, which I've questioned for a long time, and I realize salaries, no, but I'm glad that at least you went that route. And in talking...
I said it was a rainy day fund. I didn't say we had an excess fund balance.
No, 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 no.
No, but what you heard from people was that it was excess fund balance.
Oh, no, I haven't heard. I haven't heard. I'm saying to you personally, as to what you have commented on, okay? Because I knew this back, and I just kept thinking, okay, but as things continue to get worse, then why are we not? But, and that's fine. Now, I've already lost that train, the thought that I had for that second one.
Well, if I could just...
It'll come back.
While you're thinking on that, just to clarify on the reserve, and Michelle, that's in section 3, page 2, just as a refresher on that, in FY '13, completed results for FY '13, we were at 21.6%. We're projecting, based on this budget, will be down to 19.5%. So, we're lowering our fund balance 2.1% based on those, those numbers. The GFOA recommended level is 16.7.
So, we're pretty close.
So, just so you're aware, we've taken it down 2.1. We're about 2.8 above the GFOA recommended balance.
And the other thing was, was the bond financing. And in talking about the budget to other people, that held what you said exactly.
Well, that's where it needs to be, is in bond.
Correct, all right? And that's, you know, and I don't know any other way of going. I know that when I look at the finance director, it just says, I also looked at Al Martin, and when poor Al set it down at the table, and he started really scooching around, I knew that it was like, okay, you know what? We just can't go any further, so...
But beware, here's what I said. I said, we should look at it as getting through a rainy day period and build it...
Correct.
Build it up. And it's easy to say, nobody ever will. But then, that's like saying, well, you're a rainy day fund, but no one will ever use it for any day. So, that works both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
And as I understand it, our total debt service is decreasing, so that, is that why you're saying we have the opportunity to do more bond financing?
That's what I'm saying, we have some room in capital.
Right.
It's decreasing for the coming year, it's increasing throughout the five-year projections.
Well, if you do those projects that are in there, I mean, those, that can be, that can be looked at, too.
Yeah.
Because, again, well, there's part, you can look at where those bonds are falling and question whether that will happen, too.
If we went to GFOA recommendation, would you say 16.7?
That's a percent they use, right.
What would that do? What would that do for us?
Well, what it does is, it takes non-operating revenue to support operating expenses, to get you through a tough period.
Right.
Which gets heartburns, heartburn to finance directors, city administrators, and others, because you're balancing your budget without current revenue. So, so, it's, it's, you know, we felt we'd reached the point, and as I said, back on April 1st, when we first presented this, that we needed to tap into it.
Yeah.
But to make it a steady practice, I think is dangerous for the city. It gets bond rating firms attention, because it makes them a little nervous. And the bottom line is, you're funding current operating expenses without enough current operating revenue.
It's a little like stopping to repair streets. After, after a while, it catches up with you big time.
I mean, there's different ways of doing that. You can do...
And Don, I didn't say, again, once again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a permanent pr, well, I'm not saying it's a permanent pr, you've got to look at it as getting through a tough period. That is what I'm saying. I'm not saying it's a permanent practice, and I'm not saying sink too far, but there is a resource. If there's ever a time we're facing something that was beyond our control, which was the tax drop, then, you know, this is the time. That's a way of looking at it.
If we have a proposed 11-cent increase, if we went to GFOA recommendation, how would that cut that 11 cent?
I don't have that number with...
Well, Don, I haven't come in with numbers, Don. I think we can...
You know, maybe, maybe what, Michelle, roughly three cents off the 11, maybe?
Three cents?
But that's just for next year.
I didn't say it was the only answer.
Right.
I could tell you, when we met with the two bond rating firms in 2011, on one hand, they said, we like what you're doing, because you're controlling your expenditures, you've reduced your expenditures, and we like that. What we don't like is you're not strengthening and building your revenues. And we have a commitment as a bond rating agency firm to the bondholders, we want to see the city strengthen its revenues. We heard that in 2011. Now, it wasn't a mandate that we do it the next year, but it makes sense, right? They're looking at our financial viability, so they also want to see us strengthen our revenues.
And I said seven cents.
And I want to clarify that what you were saying there, Marty, about the seven cents, because I think what you were saying is you would concede the seven cents, and I took that to mean you would concede that seven cents is a...
Base.
Base, a floor.
Yeah.
That you would say, okay, seven cents is what?
Seven cents is what?
We've got to do it.
On average, I think that was the yield, the state yield.
And for me, that's important...
That's something I could tie it to, the state.
Yeah. For me, that's important, because I think it puts in context any effort that I might, you know, have to say, okay, you know, here are some mechanisms within the overall structure of the budget where you could identify that three or four other cents. But I think it would need to be done within those opportunities in a manner that secures you to some degree from the pending 11 cents next year. In other words, it can't be all cuts, it can't be all revenue. It's got to be something that says, okay, here are some things we may be able to switch over to CIP.
Well, that's why I talked about moving the current revenue, even though it's...
Yeah, no, I think, I think I understand.
And maybe some of that debt service I can move out, even though what I'm saying, capital's what'll help, but that's over a three-year period.
Right. I wanted to highlight a couple of numbers that, you know, I think that, and we talked about this earlier today when we met, that folks seem, seemed to gloss over a little bit. And, you know, it speaks a little bit to Lou's comment about the 12.5 cent tax decrease, which, if I'm not mistaken, that was the same year the state cut the highway user funds that are no longer in the budget. That's probably what, about 1.8 million. At that time, you know, and I think it also speaks to, you know, the newspaper had an article, or an editorial the other week, about this catastrophic 7.8% decrease in property tax assessments, which, which if you go into the budget, the last tax assessment, if that was, you know, catastrophic, the 11.2% decrease that nobody sort of talked about was cataclysmic. So, you know, I just look at that and say, okay, you took a 12 and a half cent tax decrease on the actual real property tax, and you took a 20% decrease in your average assessable, you know, tax payment. And so, you know, it's really about a 35 cent, you know, part. But the other four numbers are numbers that I think speak to Marty's point about, you know, changing the nature of what we need to occur. And I think also speak to that same Herald Mail editorial that talked about, we need to improve our tax base, and that is, you know, our housing stock, 15% of it is subsidized. 25% of our population is categorized as being below the poverty level. We have an 11% vacancy rate for homes within the city. And the biggest number that no one ever talks about is the 10% of our base that is simply not taxed, that commands, you know, a certain degree of our governmental services. And, you know, and that, I think, is a huge number. It's probably decreased since, since the hospital move, but, but it's probably still around that 10% range. You know, and those, I think, are sort of four factors that, in this long-term sort of structural approach, and one of the things that I talked to Michelle about is, you know, some of these 11% homes that are vacant, you know, a number of them are sort of larger homes, you know, that have been vacated. And, you know, going and, you know, looking at purchase and being able to be competitive in that instance where, you know, you look at a home and it's, it's an older home within the city, doesn't have, you know, the degree of upgrades you might find outside of the city, and, you know, and its tax bill comes, you know, and the tax bills, you know, anywhere from 4,500 to $6,000. I think that of those structural issues, that is one that has to be front and center on the table, in terms of how that, that overall tax impact, you know, affects the ability for, you know, reoccupation of those homes, and, you know, and then the ability for the increase in the tax base. So, I just think that's something that, you know, we need to be aware of.
If I could, real quick, there are a couple of strengths in this budget that I wanted to just reiterate. One is, for the first time in years, we have step increases for our employees, something I wanted to do last year, and we couldn't quite pull off, but for the first time in a long time, we've got COLAs and steps in the budget for our employees in the coming fiscal year. I think that's crucial in terms of the strength and sustainability of our operations. So, I hope that can remain. And I think the 11-cent tax increase strengthens our finances, it strengthens our operations. And I would encourage the mayor and council to think about any adjustments. Does it strengthen our operations? Is it going to strengthen our finances? And you're talking about that when you're talking about multi-year perspectives, and if we make an adjustment, does it make things better for the following year, FY '16? But I think getting a stronger revenue structure in place is a strength of this budget. And as I said in the message, and I would say today, I think you can make a case for a larger tax increase than the 11 cents, based on our use of reserve and based on our projections for FY '16. I said that last Monday. So, I think both of those are positives, getting the steps in there for employees, getting the stronger revenue performance in there with the tax increase, which is pretty much what we've got. You know, the county has title transfer tax revenues, they've got a broader revenue base than the city does, not just in terms of the tax base, but in terms of revenue sources. And, and so, we're heavily relying on the property tax. And when we run short, and we have now, obviously, because of the assessed values, then that's what we've turned to. I don't think that's necessarily a weakness of the budget. Not an easy decision, as you've said, but in the course of doing that, we're making ourselves stronger.
Mayor, have you found the magic wand yet?
I have not. I still only have this gavel here, Mr. Munson.
There's no magic in it, right? Do you have any thoughts about what we need to get there?
You know, I, I think, as anyone looks at this budget, I agree with what Councilmember Metzner said, and I think what I even heard Mr. Brubaker and Mr. Alshar say, and that's, you know, it's, you might be able to find one or two cents, but in the end, you know...
And usually, that's how it is.
If it doesn't really help you, like the city administrator said, strengthen your position in the out years, and, you know, it's a choice of, do you want to cut valuable services? You know, the thing about government is, people really only know that it exists when it doesn't do what we expect it to do.
Correct.
Or you needed a police officer.
Right, or if your sewer breaks, or, you know, anything.
Right.
Mr. Brubaker.
I don't think we're talking one or two cents here. I mean, you know, I think we're talking, trying to find more than that, and because we've got another, this budget is proposing another 11 cents next year, or whatever the number is. It's a number we can't do, we simply can't do. So, I'm saying, we've got to look at this and say, we can't do this. We've got to get through somehow. Without going, having an 11 cent this year and a large increase next year, this city will not be in a, Bruce, I agree, but you can, you can do the positioning thing the other way, and we're positioning ourselves in a way that we're not competitive economically, and we can't do that either. And I agree with Don, yes, there's a balance with the services, but, you know, there's only so many answers, and some are more drastic than what I'm saying, as I know everybody knows. But, but just raising taxes this year and again next year, I, I don't think is going to work.
And how do you say this? Councilmember Brubaker talked about thinking outside the box. I hear, I hear this, and what I think we're dealing with right now, is we're down to basic services, all right? So, if you want to talk about some fundamental cuts, and you want to talk about stirring up the population, you know, how much do we, we're putting a cap on it this year, but just let's get it out in the public. How much are we spending to subsidize our golf course this year?
Two hundred thousand.
$200,000 in your proposed fiscal year 15 budget.
So, you know, it's time, before I talk about reading our reserve fund and cutting our essential staff, I talk and say, sell the golf course. It's a $200,000 expense. So we have a golf course in addition to the money that we could potentially make on the golf course through development. You have urban partners, everybody's afraid to even talk about that. I mean, that's, we're talking about, and I don't mean to say you are a council member, this isn't directed at you, but this is directed at this theory that we're, to sustain what we're doing is impossible. And if that's the case, then if I'm looking at slashing, I'm looking at slashing things like golf courses. I'm looking at slashing things like that. And I mean, there's a $200,000 a year expense right there, and that's probably the least we've spent on the golf course in years. That's not a viable alternative right now, this year, and I'm not proposing we do it, but I'm sure proposing that before we start talking about going back to where we have been and cutting essential services. And it's, we both, we all understand this, this is, everybody agrees with this, it's just how you deal with it.
And again, Lou, you just, I wish people, it's not slashing, no, I'm talking about using it to get through an emergency.
I...
A difficult situation. I'm not talking about using it to fund salaries and benefits.
I'm not implying...
I'm not using it...
I'm not implying that you are. That's what I want to just say, Marty. I'm not implying that you are at all.
And again, it's not necessarily a recommendation, but I'm think, it's something to think about.
It's no more a recommendation than my comment about selling the golf course is a recommendation. I mean, that's the point. I don't want to...
It's just good to have had the issues brought up.
But these are the things we have to think about of where we're going and what we want to do. That's all. And that's what I'm saying. There are no easy solutions, and you get into this vicious circle of the chicken and the egg. You say, we can't afford to have the amount of employees we need. And the best example I can give is the police, because it's not an example, it's reality. It's reality. We save the substantial amount of money by not filling police positions, and then what happens is our downtown deteriorates because people are afraid to come downtown because we don't have police, which means the tax values go down, which means we have to raise... It's this vicious cycle. And nobody at this table disagrees with this cycle or that we have to find a way to stop it. And everybody has ideas, and the answer is, as we've said repeatedly, there isn't an easy idea here. There isn't a magic wand. There isn't something here that anyone will hurt. And the biggest emphasis I have for the budget this year is I just want to emphasize to our citizens, this quote, 11 cent tax increase is not at all what it's made out to be. It's just essentially getting even and puts us back where we were 10 years ago. And when Penny asked the question, when was the last time we raised taxes, the answer was 10 years ago, but she didn't, she didn't answer the next question.
What was that?
When was the last time we lowered taxes? That was eight years ago. So we've lowered taxes since we've raised taxes. And what we're doing is we're going back to where we were 10 years ago, yet our revenues will be greater than they were 10 years ago. But ask anybody if they're living at the same expenses that they had 10 years ago. Everybody's expenses have gone up, and so have ours.
Well, and I think the key challenge is, how do we create value without stopping our investment in the community? Whether that's through capital projects or through our employees by enhancing their wages. You know, it's, you know, we might raise taxes 11 cents this year and then raise them 11 cents next year. The boom hits us, and then we're raking in so much cash based on those rates that we say in three years, jeez, we've got to lower these rates because we're just raking in so much dough.
Which government has done repeatedly. So when people say, oh, yeah, you never lower taxes. We lowered taxes eight years ago, and we lowered taxes in 2011, more than we're talking about raising taxes this year. So this government, this administration has a history of lowering taxes whenever possible.
I think I can safely say it's no fun sitting around this table talking about a tax increase. We're doing this because no other alternative exists.
Well, if no one else has anything else for the good of the cause, we can call it a night for, and then I guess various council members will be doing their homework and getting together with staff and coming back.
Should we schedule a work session next week, just to keep things moving? I mean, we're four, four weeks away.
Sure. We can either have a separate work session or add it to our Tuesday agenda. Anyone have any preference?
I think it's better to add it to Tuesday myself. Everybody's sort of...
Tuesday's a good day for you, right?
Dress up and go to church day.
Just a reminder, then, we'll have the hearing on May 13.
Let me just say one word before we get off of this. If we have to pay, if we have to raise taxes by 11 cents, and you're right, Lou, that gets us just where we were a decade ago, there is no implication in that that we're going to raise taxes next year. And to be a little tiny bit optimistic, the economy does seem to be picking up some. I've noticed, there was a big headline in the paper recently where, about jobs picking up. I see that Frederick's doing better, and hopefully it's going to help us out some, enough to take care of some of our needs, budget needs, next year.
Anyone else for the good of the cause? All right, we'll adjourn this work session, and we'll be back here at 7 o'clock for the regular session.
All right. Oh.